I'm going to start the recording. We're connecting to the live streaming momentarily.
Susan, I don't think Abel can hear you.
I can hear you now. I had my mute on. Explains it. It seemed very quiet. All right. All right, so we have 30 seconds left, I presume. You're recording. Let's see if we have our presenter in the audience. Yeah, Cecilia Dusset, I believe. All right, it is 6:30. Recording. Let us get started with our work session this evening. This is the South Kingstown Town Council. We have a presentation this evening for 30 minutes on the effects of wireless technology is what we've called it on the agenda. Cecilia, you can elaborate further. This comes about as the request of a few residents in town for us to look into this matter. So please proceed.
Great. Thank you so much for inviting me in tonight and helping you to join the technology safety conversation. I'll go ahead and do a screen share with the set of slides that I prepared. Can everybody see that? Okay, so I will provide these slides to you at the end of our presentation tonight. I'll send them by email. And here we go. So that MTPW after my name just means I had the privilege of earning a master's of technical and professional writing at Northeastern University. And I believe Stephen Dahl, who heads up Rhode Islanders for Safe Technology, gave you a little bit of information on my background. But like perhaps many of you, I had no idea there was anything to be concerned about with wireless technology. And then one night at book group, an engineer friend of mine indicated there could be something up biologically. And I had spent eight years bringing wireless technology into Ashland Public Schools here in Massachusetts. So that was my entry point. And being a tech writer, I started doing the deep dive into the peer reviewed scientific literature. And when I began to share this information with our schools, we wound up becoming the first in the nation to even have this little sign hanging in all of our classrooms with some baby steps toward precaution. I also worked with Senate President Karen Spilka and my state representative here in Massachusetts on legislation and helped to get a groundbreaking bill passed into law in New Hampshire to investigate this. And I'll give you a bit more detail on that in a moment. On this journey, I've had the privilege of connecting with many of the world's leading scientists and doctors. And out of Europe, we co-founded this little nonprofit called Wireless Education, where we have distilled all the scientific literature and medical recommendations into quick mini courses that we have prepared for schools and families and for the corporate workplace. And then at first, I thought I was the only one around me who was figuring this out. And then we had an expert panel that was brought into our state house in 2015. And it turns out there were many people across the Commonwealth here who knew about this. So in the last year, we have formed Massachusetts for Safe Technology. And any of the links in here, you'll be able to just go in and start your own investigation and drill down. So anything that I've learned to help you connect the dots, by all means, use it as your launch point if you so choose. I include this link from the National Institutes of Health, where I was asked to co-chair a technology panel for the Health and Buildings Roundtable Conference, because all of our talks for that are under 10 minutes. So if you're an audio learner, you'll hear from the retired president of Microsoft Canada on this issue. You'll hear from one of the world's leading scientists and Dr. Martin Paul. And you'll also hear from Theodora Scorato, who's the executive director of the Environmental Health Trust, which has arguably the world's greatest database on all of this wireless radiation information. So for a quick come up to speed, this is a great place to go to. And then I was also honored to give a talk at the recent EMF Medical Conference. This offered continuing medical training credits for doctors and nurses and first responders. And I was so honored to speak about state and local policy, because when I fell down the rabbit hole almost 10 years ago, we didn't have any of these resources to come up to speed with. So feel free to dive into these and see what resonates with you. When my schools became the first in the nation to be in taking precautionary measures, I think it was because they stopped and read the legal fine print that comes with all of our devices. So if any of you on the council tonight have an iPhone, I would welcome you to take that out right now. Can I see a show of hands if anybody has an iPhone? Okay, if you can take it out and go into settings, I want to show you what's been in there all along that most of us pretty much had no idea. If you don't use an iPhone, there's a website called See the Fine Print, where you can go and look up the legal disclaimers that are in other devices. So in an iPhone from settings, scroll down just a little bit and hit general. From general, if it's a newer phone, go all the way down to the bottom to legal and regulatory. Do you see that? Okay, hit legal and regulatory. And then there's a little list at the top, a little ways down, you'll see RF exposure, which is radio frequency radiation or two-way microwave radiation that the manufacturers politely call energy. And in that legal fine print, it tells us a couple of really important things. One, this device was tested at a distance from your body. So don't use it against your body, or you may exceed FCC limits for public radiation exposure. And as we'll see, those limits were never biologically safety tested. And two, it tells us to use a hands-free option, because without being forthright, they give us these devices now with five or six separate antennas constantly pulsing this microwave radiation to make or maintain a handshake with the nearest cell tower or router. And tonight's message is certainly not no technology, but we would like to share some information to hopefully help you understand that we can get to safe technology without all of this wireless radiation exposure. And so when I figured out what the science was telling us, and I learned that there are scientific devices that allow us to see and hear this invisible toxin, I went after a grant from my town, and we became the first in the nation again to put a radiation detection meter on loan in our public library. So here in my home, I choose to have safe technology. And you'll see that this pretty much stays in the green. That's because I'm just getting my technology with you tonight through an ethernet cable. And then I went into all my settings and just turned off the antennas. So I have an old hand-me-down cellphone from my husband. And as a rule, I keep it in airplane mode, because that turns off all the antennas that are in there. But I want to give you a demonstration of what happens when we actually use a transmitting device. So these are those antennas I spoke of that are constantly pulling radiation at me to communicate with the cell towers and routers. And you'll see that's going into the extreme level. Remember the number 32,000, because it'll hold meaning for you in just a moment. So I was very grateful that we were able to put that meter on loan in our public library. And now we have people, not only others in Massachusetts that are doing this, a doctor and I went after a cultural council grant in Newton and put one on loan in their library. Pittsfield has one coming into circulation too. So anybody in the community can start gathering the data from this invisible toxin. So what does the science tell us? In the short term, a lot of people are experiencing symptoms of electromagnetic sensitivity, which the Americans with Disabilities Act already recognizes. And a lot of the symptoms that so many people struggle with today, they would never think to connect to their radiation from their wireless devices. So many people start sleeping through the night again simply by turning off the routers and the cell phones and the, you know, tablets and the Roku and the Chromecast and the Ring. All these things that are pulsing, a lot of people start regaining their sleeping abilities. Stabbing, searing headaches that their doctors can't figure out, nosebleeds and ear bleeds, this chronic fatigue syndrome that so many get into, pain from unidentified sources, skin rashes, heating, flushing. This one is very common too, heartbeats that go too fast or too slow, because you got to remember we are bioelectric, and this electromagnetic field is interfering with our own biological systems. Cognitive impairments, a big one, not only with our senior citizens, where we naturally begin to lose a little bit of our cognitive abilities, but for children and adults as well. Anger issues, behavior issues, anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation. The science shows that this is a neurotoxin. This is a good study over here that microwave electromagnetic frequencies are tied to these neuropsychiatric effects, including depression. And then in the long term, what the peer-reviewed published scientific studies are telling us is that this is linked to child and adult cancers. This study on the top here is from our own government. It's the largest study the U.S. National Toxicology Program has ever conducted. And it was a 20-year study that had an unprecedented three-day peer review at the NIH. And at the end, their final report concluded clear evidence of cancerous tumors and DNA damage. Clear evidence is the highest of five categories that they can assign. And DNA damage, we know, is the roadmap to grow a proper anything that is made up of biological cells. And then it was actually the infertility studies that got me on my feet when I started reading the science. They had taken male human sperm, exposed it to a laptop with the antennas turned on, and it changed the DNA, it slowed the motility, and it caused far fewer sperm to be viable in just four hours of exposure. So that was the day I found my voice and started speaking to my children's schools about having Wi-Fi in the classroom. And then, as I mentioned, there are many studies linking this to neurotoxicity. And children are not just little people. Biologically, they're still under construction. Their central nervous system, their immune system are all still in development. And their skulls are thinner. So this diagram here shows what this, these heads are sideways, and the little yellow thing is the ear. When you put a cellphone up to an adult head, the radiation is penetrating into the brain this far. On a 10-year-old, it's going to hear. And on a five-year-old, it's absorbing almost through the entire brain. So we really need to learn about this and start taking steps to protect our children. And it's not just us. It's every biological cell, from our pollinators to the plants. Everything is biologically activated by these EMFs or electromagnetic fields of radio frequency radiation. And with those who are concerned about what we're doing as far as climate change go, you should know that wireless and all of its infrastructure consumes 10 times more the energy than what it would be if we did the right solution, which is just bring the cables right to the premises and hook up with ethernet cables inside. So everything we do is at a cost of energy on our wireless systems. So where are these signals coming from? As we discussed in Shaw, our own personal devices, the routers, the wearables, the cell phones, the decked cordless phones, our tablets are all using this energy and emitting microwave radiation. The utility smart meters for gas, water, electric, and solar, these are being mounted on people's homes with no informed consent, and they pulse this radiation 24/7. And on this brochure, you could have a child sleeping on the other side of the wall from one of these smart meters. You could have an elderly person or a pregnant woman or someone who already has health complications. And this is an added body burden on top of that. The big cell antennas are called macro towers or macro cell antennas. Those are the ones here that started way out in industrial parks, and then they've been encroaching closer and closer as the years have gone by. And now the wireless industry would like to put 5G small cell antennas in our public accessway at the curb, right outside our homes. And they're stripping our towns of local control, or so they tell our towns. So what does this look like in your community of South Kingston? Stephen Dahl was gracious to go out and take some live readings. And this is at one of your neighborhood apartment complexes. This is what the science tells us that we should aim for. The goal is to be less than 0.1 microwatts per square meter. And this is what those smart meters are transmitting all through the day and all through the night, 4,930. And we want to be anything over 1,000 is extreme concern in the scientific literature. Hang on, I just want to see if I can move this bar. It's blocking my slide. So Broad Rock Middle School, this is what the small cell looks like that's mounted there. And when you look at the school out by the athletic fields and the track, and then when you look to see what that's doing in the neighborhood as well, again, extreme concern over 1,000, 11,500, right in this school neighborhood. Peace Dale Library, to see what happens inside our buildings. This is what the wireless access point looks like, mounted right here on the ceiling in the library. And this is where Stephen Dahl got so ill from working in that library, standing under that router hour after hour. Those exposures were also 11,500 microwatts per square meter. At the Child Development Center in your community. At the playground, 16,500. Right outside the facility, 41,100. At the Teffs Hill Residential Neighborhood, where you have that water tower with the cell towers mounted on top of it, 57,400. So when I was studying this, I kept thinking, surely somebody's got our backs on this. And then in 2015, Harvard Law School Center for Ethics put out this 59-page report that's available online for free called Captured Agency, how the FCC is dominated by the industries that presumably regulates. And in Captured Agency, it tells us that the wireless industry and our federal agencies are this revolving door. The folks heading up the FCC are from industry. So we've got the fox watching the hen house here. And that $30 million study that our own government did, when they concluded clear evidence of cancerous tumors and DNA damage in 2018, that should have triggered public policy to protect the public. But instead, the FDA, which commissioned that study, turned around to the FCC and said, ah, it's fine, keep doing what you're doing. One might ask why they would do that. Well, the gentleman who's in charge of the FDA's radiation unit is not the same person who was in charge 20 years when this, 20 years ago, when this commission was set up. Dr. Jeffrey Shuren, who's in charge today, is married to a woman who's a partner in a law firm that represents the wireless industry to the tune of billions of dollars. So we have total conflicts of interest throughout our federal agencies, which is why it's so important that we look at this at the local level and do everything in our control to ensure fast, safe, green technology. So Dr. Martin Luther King taught us that when we do finally make inroads on these important societal issues, it comes through three channels. One, the public engages. Two, the courts rule. And three, public policy is enacted. So here in Massachusetts, the city of Boston has already filed comments with the FCC saying, we believe the public, we've seen the science, we know this is harmful. They also banded with other towns across the U.S. to sue the FCC for stripping them of local control. They didn't win that lawsuit, but it sure raised the issue. Here in Burlington, Mass., they formed a townwide policy committee from their planning, their zoning, their select board, their Board of Health. And they studied this issue. They hired a lawyer who specializes in telecom law. And they came up with this small cell policy that had Verizon withdrawing their seven small cell applications, because they said typical things like you have to comply with the ADA, you can't have equipment that's going to block anybody from getting by. Anything you put up has to blend in with the environment, and you have to come back every year and recertify that this equipment is still viable in our town. And you have to pay our town a fee so we can engage an independent consultant. Now that's when the Verizon lawyer said, well, my client doesn't want to set precedent for an annual research or an annual fee, because they plan to put millions of these small cells at the curb every two to 12 houses in your neighborhood and in mine. So they didn't want to set precedent. Americans for Responsible Technology has groups from all over the country on their website who are doing what Rhode Islanders for Safe Technology are doing. And that's coming in and educating our towns and our schools and our neighbors. They have taken all these best practices and created templates that make it really easy for our towns to look at their bylaws versus what good bylaws should have in them. So please take advantage of those resources. Other towns in Massachusetts have already adopted the Burlington Small Cell Policy. And in Pittsfield, Mass., right when the pandemic hit, there was a cell tower that was erected right next to a neighborhood in Pittsfield. And the day that it was turned on, people started getting sick. There are adults and children, at least 14 that we know of, who got very sick from this. And they've since last August been trying to get Pittsfield to do something to protect them. And Pittsfield thought the Massachusetts Board of Health would come to their rescue. Our DPH led them to believe they would, and then at the last minute, they turned their backs on them. So Pittsfield realized there is no cavalry coming. You've got to address it at the local level. And so they finally allowed real experts to come in, world-leading scientists, world-leading doctors, and others who understand what this is doing to our communities. So this was just at the beginning of June. So this is very current, and you can watch that two-hour forum there. Rhode Islanders have been working on this since 2019. I was asked to come down by Rhode Islanders for Safe Technology. We met with Senator White House's office, Karen Bradbury, as well as Anna Esten. We also met with Dr. Michael Burns at RIDOH, and he's a toxicologist. We met with him first, and then he came and joined us at the Senator White House offices. And then Senator Elaine Morgan, her daughter in college was studying these EMFs, so she knew a bit about this. I had the privilege of hosting one of the world's leading experts on this, Dr. Annie Sasko, who is a World Health Organization former cancer epidemiologist. She was in town for an event at Harvard, which is her alma mater. And so I hosted her, and while she was here, we made her available to come in and educate. And so we came down. Senator Elaine Morgan held a press conference at your state house to share this critical information. Most recently, State Representative Deb Ruggiero from Jamestown or Jamestown and Middleton has become engaged in this, and she is advocating for the right solution, which is broadband fiber to the premises. So while our states are being given money from the COVID bucket to connect everybody, we need to make sure it's not being done with wireless, but it's coming right to the premises with safe, hardwired technology. So legal solutions, the FCC had an open docket in which leading authorities sent in testimony, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Academy of Environmental Medicine, doctors, scientists, and far too many people who have been harmed by this radiation. They completely ignored the science, and they shut their docket and said, we don't have to change our guidelines or our public safety limits. So once that hit the federal register, the Environmental Health Trust and Robert F. Kennedy Jr.'s Children's Health Defense sued the FCC, and oral arguments were held in January with three federal judges in DC. And after the FCC lawyers were up there saying, oh, it's fine, the judges meanwhile had been presented with 27 volumes, 11,000 pages of evidence that there are serious ramifications to this wireless. And they asked the attorneys from the FCC, so please help us understand, what was your due diligence to come to the conclusion that you can keep exposing at the rate that you're exposing people? And they kind of did one of these and said, oh, the FDA said it was fine. And so they said, well, okay, show us what the FDA did for due diligence, and the lawyers have nothing to present. So we're waiting for the outcome of that hearing. And today, a new brief was filed. There's something called the over-the-air reception device rule. So you used to be able to have, or you still can, satellite dish on your home or your rental property that gave you a one-way signal to receive entertainment, streaming, or whatever you wanted. On March 29th of this year, the FCC changed the OTAR rule to allow the wireless industry to come knocking on your door or your neighbors and say, hey, we'll give you some money, we'll give you the best 5G access, maybe we'll throw in a free new cool phone if you'll just let us put this antenna up on your roof. So now they're turning people's homes into cell towers. So there's a lawsuit against the FCC for that. The regulators already sued the FCC and won. We were billed for years on our internet bills and our phone bills.
Pardon me, Cece. I just want to let you know that we've gotten to 6:55, so there's about five minutes left. I don't know if that...
I'll wrap up. So they took the money that was meant for the good technology, they put it in their wireless bucket, they got sued. And now our states can go back and recoup that money to bring the safe technology in. So in New Hampshire, we got a law passed in seven months to investigate the health and environmental impacts of 5G. And when they did that, they realized they had to look at the whole EMF thing. Seven months from the House to the Senate to the governor's pen, they formed this commission. And on November 1st, they issued this groundbreaking report that documents the conflicts of interest with our federal agencies and the industry. They also make 15 recommendations to hardwire our communities, get wireless out of our schools, start actively educating the public. So today, they can know that they have a choice for safe technology. We've got 11 directly sponsored bills in Massachusetts. And what we can do today, once we learn about this and our head stops spinning, just start looking at your stuff. Don't leave it on all the time. Put it in airplane mode when you're not using it, which will turn off most of these antennas. And then be very aware of what we're exposing others to, babies, adults, elderly, people who are sick, and our pets should not be exposed to this, and neither should you or I. So it's not rocket science. I'll show you a little diagram here. From the back of your router, get an ethernet cable, preferably a shielded one, so the dirty electricity doesn't come out into the room too. This is like a little extension cord for technology. You can plug in as many devices as you want. Just get a little adapter. Who knew? You can get an adapter for a cellphone. You can get an adapter for a MacBook or a Chromebook for short money, right? It's not going to break the bank. And then just go into the settings and turn off the antennas. And you will not only have safe technology, but it's going to be faster and far more reliable than anything wireless will ever be able to deliver. And you can forward cellphone calls to a landline when you're not on the go. So we have all sorts of solutions for schools. This TechSafe Schools program just launched, and it talks about the legal risks that our schools are exposing themselves to for using this technology and not protecting the kids. Silicon Valley executives are banning screens from their own children. So there are many resources for you to look at. We just held that medical conference to train healthcare providers. Those videos are also accessible to the public. We have training for engineers, physicists, technologists, architects. And there's a whole profession that can come in and do the assessments and the remediations for you through building biology experts. And so we have all sorts of, you know, even PBS, Burt Wolf, on his travel show has already done two episodes on this. There's an award-winning film called Generation Zapped in the Kingston Library. We've already done a screening there. But many resources that you would never even know are there. So for your next steps, you might want to start holding community forums to get the word out to the public. Here's one that we held with Tri-Town Health in the Berkshires here. Get your professional organizations educated on this. Support the bills and meet with your legislators to get fiber to the premises. And maybe form a townwide South Kingston TechSafe Committee. Allow your citizens to opt out of those toxic smart meters. Start transitioning to hardwired in public spaces. And take a hard look at your local bylaws, your zoning for wireless communication facilities, and use the resources that are now available. And don't be shy about bringing in an attorney who knows what the wireless industry is up to and can protect you further than what your local bylaws probably already have. So just be careful where you go for your sources of information. The New York Times, two times Pulitzer Prize-winning Bill Broad, he put out this article saying... he put out this article saying, "5G is just scaremongering by the Russians." That is so broken, such broken information that in Ireland, the ombudsman called them out for violation of truth and accuracy code. Who would know? They've got a 5G Verizon lab at the New York Times. Same thing at the World Health Organization. Two groups on EMFs, one is still posting false information. The other, now that the science has become so clear, opened a new investigation. We're waiting to see if that's going to get stacked with the industry people or the real qualified doctors and scientists. So thank you for letting me present. I know it's like drinking water out of a fire hose when you first learn about this. But this was just an overview, just the start of the conversation. So even silly little questions, don't hesitate to reach out. I would be honored to come back and host a real forum in your community for an hour or two where we can have more time to present and answer questions. So if there are any questions that you may have right now, I'd love to take a minute to help with that.
Thank you, Cece, and thank you for keeping it to have an hour. I appreciate how concise you are. Are there any questions at this point?
Okay, just to show a hands, was anybody aware of this issue before your citizens brought it forward? Yeah, you're not alone. There was one gentleman at the State House after I met with dozens and dozens and dozens of legislative offices there. One gentleman knew because his father was the physicist who brought the team into Chernobyl after it blew. But by and large, this is how successful the wireless industry has been. So I hope you'll take the time to really investigate. And as soon as you sense that there's a big issue here, do whatever is in your power to make this a priority, because those small cells are literally showing up outside of people's homes. Those smart meters are mounted on homes, and the industry doesn't care. So there's no cavalry coming. We have to take care of it at the local level. Okay.
Right, thank you very much, Cece.
You're welcome.
We'll dig into those resources.
Yeah, I'll send those over tonight. Thanks so much, everybody. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Right, and then, so that brings us right into our regularly scheduled work session. Or we can go over our agenda. We do have a long one tonight. Terry, do you want to take us through it?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. What I'll do is, unless anyone has any questions on communications, I'll skip right to new business, because that's where the bulk of our conversation will reside. Are there any questions on communications? Okay.
Looks like Councilwoman Berger has.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have a question on communications, but I do have a question on the water supply memo from John Shock. So when you finish what you're doing, if there's time, I'll ask a couple of questions about it.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's great. Okay, if we hop to new business, we have a number of recommendations. I will run through them quickly and point out, give you a little bit of detail on the ones that I think you might benefit from a little more detail. We have new business item C, which is a grant for the EMS department for $40,000 to help run the paramedicine program in conjunction with local agency. That's the Rhode Island State Office of Rural Health. So I recommend supporting that. Obviously, we want to see the paramedicine program succeed, and Craig is available if you have any questions on that. Item D is the annual resolution authorizing the abatement of uncollectible tangible and personal property taxes. That is in the amount of $50,889. Our finance director has done a detailed memorandum that describes what those are. In essence, it's anything over 10 years of trying to collect taxes, primarily motor vehicle taxes, after 10 years' worth of efforts, including legal legal matters to Rossi Law Office, who we've used for the past several years. They're deemed uncollectible. And so that memorandum simply recommends writing off those, abating those tax dollars back from 2010. We have a resolution for an award, a bid for a police vehicle that is detailed in Chief Ewing Chow's memorandum. If there's no questions on that, that's standard, and it is in the capital budget. And then we have several recommendations from the Public Services Director with regards to contracts that they use annually. We've got item G is drainage and concrete curb retaining wall materials. H is road building materials. And please stop me if you have questions on these. John has done memorandums for each of these and has detailed out the bid process with, I think, sufficient detail that explains all of those bids. And also the refuse disposal and recycling contract with Republic Services. Those are items I, J, and K. And again, if you have any questions, certainly just say the word. We have, item L is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the bid for UniFirst, which is a uniform leasing company that the town uses through the Public Services Department. And that is for a contract extension. Items M, N, and O, those are all Marina Park lease agreements and recommendations to enter into lease agreements for existing tenants. And that is for Marina Park Associates, which is Marina Bay. And then two leases for Ram Point Marina. And you've got a detailed memorandum with regard to the annual escalation. Councilwoman Rose?
Thanks, Terry. I just have a quick question, something that came to me this week. Are there public slips worked into that agreement with Ram Point Marina? I thought there were four. I could be wrong. I just wanted to get some clarification on that as far as using it as a right of way.
We have actually one slip that is for the Harbor Master Boat, which is part of the Ram Point area. I am not aware of any other public slips that Ram Point offers. We do have, obviously, the two boat ramp, the boat ramp at Marina Park. And then there's a smaller public boat ramp that is next to Point Judith Yacht Club, which allows for put-ins for kayaks and non-motorized water.
Okay, I might have my information turned around here. So thank you for clarifying.
Sure. If there are no questions on the Marina Park leases, item P is a resolution authorizing the tax collection procedures, which is an annual item for the council to consider on tax collections. And you have samples of those, actually the resolutions, in your packets. And they are, there are no recommended changes to the policy for this year. There is still a one-month grace period on the quarterly tax collection, and that was implemented in the current year, so that will remain. Item O is a resolution to extend the current contract that the town has with Minnesota Life to provide contractual obligatory life insurance for town employees. And you will see that that is recommending to extend the current contract with the intention of going out to bid for a three, a longer-term contract in the next fiscal year. Any questions? Item R is, this came to us from Councilwoman Kelso. It involves appointing a council member to be on the South Kingstown Narragansett Senior Advisory Council, which was established in 2016 between the two towns as a regional information sharing board that meets on a quarterly basis. And currently, the last year, the board did not meet, partially due to COVID-19. But we right now have a vacancy for a council member as well as two senior citizen members to be appointed by the council. The three-year term that was set for seniors to participate ended at the end of 2020. So we are in a position, or you are in a position now, to appoint two citizen members to that board. And that board has begun meeting again to share information on how to streamline services and also any timely issues that come up with regard to elder services within our two communities. Item S is the year-end fund transfers, which you will see in the memorandum from our finance director, that every year, the town finance department projects what the surplus may be for the budget. And then there is a recommendation to carry forward or assign some of the year-end surplus to various accounts as indicated in Zach's memorandum. And you can see that the Section 4224 of the Town Charter provides that, and it's in his memo, "Every general fund appropriation except an appropriation for a capital project expenditure shall lapse at the close of the fiscal year." And that appropriations for a capital project expenditure shall continue in force until expended, revised, or repealed. So what this is doing is taking some of the projected surplus at the year end and assigning it to various projects within the town to either speed up the project. Typically, their capital, as you can see in the memo, primarily, most of the funding has been saved in this fiscal year through personnel, open personnel positions that haven't been filled. Particularly, the police department had a few that were not filled right at the get-go at the beginning of the year. There were three positions, as well as a vacant captain position when Chief Ewing Chow was promoted to the chief position. So Zach can certainly come in and explain in further detail the year-end, recommended year-end transfers. It is typical, in past years, we've had anywhere from between 1.6 million to, the lowest was 424,000, 25,000, which was last year, and that was just for the OPEB transfers. But in a typical year, it's anywhere from a million to 1.6. That's over the past five years that we've seen that type of fund transfer at the year end. Questions?
Looks like Councilwoman Berger.
Thank you, Abel. I appreciate that. So I don't know if Zach could tell us. So I reread the memo, and so the question I have is, the table that he presents on page one, it shows what they transfer, but it doesn't show the total amount of the surplus. So I see what was allocated to the reserve fund, but what went into the undesigned for each of the last, I don't know, six, five or six fiscal years there? Because, you know, so 2015, 1.6 million got transferred to the reserve fund, but how much went to the undesigned? So I think there's additional information. So I see that this year, it's 1.4 million total surplus. We're allocating 1.269. So by subtraction, 131 is going back to the undesigned fund. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I guess, I just wanted to be clear that we, last year, all you show is that you put 425 in OPEB, which I probably need a little refresher on. But what ended up going to the reserves, Zach must know that, because we talked about turning the budget, but I can't remember.
Sure, I can, Terry, if you want, I can take this.
Sure.
So historically, you know, it's year by year. This is done before the close of the fiscal year. So the OPEB transfers have always been included in the operating budget. But because you're taking it from the general fund and you're requesting to move it to the OPEB fund, which is a separate fund, we need your approval as the council. And we have the discretion, depending on what happens during the year, whether we make the entire appropriation or some sort of, you know, deviation from that. Historically, the town has put the entire appropriation in there. So that, which is why we have a healthy OPEB plan. The projected surplus is in those fiscal years, that column that, you know, you didn't see. They ranged in the million to million-five range. So you're asking for appropriations, you know, net of the OPEB, you'd be in that $600,000 to $800,000 range. And then depending how you finish the year from your budgetary basis of the audit, it can drive what would move to the unassigned fund balance. And that can, you know, and that's driven by a lot of things. For example, you know, some unknowns are investment income. We don't do that fair market value adjustment till our auditors come in. That happens in December. So you could see anywhere from 800,000 going into the unassigned fund balance after these transfers have been made. And we finalized all of our other kind of expenses and got our year-end encumbrances, you know, recorded and things like that, and assigned into the appropriate funds. So it ranges from year to year. I would say this year, you know, the savings on the, you know, you have, you had better-than-expected, we think we'll have better-than-expected revenues, and then we'll have better-than-expected surplus on the expenditure side. So together, that would be your overall surplus. And after these transfers, you know, we could see probably, you know, an estimate, and I'll give a big range. It could be in that, you know, $5,000 to $700,000 range. After, you know, we kind of go over it, but we won't know all that till we finalize and booked all of our expenditures for year end. But what we're doing now, based on a pure projection of where we think all the expenditures will go, for the town this year, where it's mainly personnel.
Yeah.
You know, it's just because of, and prudent spending throughout the year because of the unknowns at the beginning of the fiscal year when we're in July, August, September. We didn't have a budget in July because of the referendum. We kind of tightened everything and waited and bought things at the last minute. We filled, you know, and I can go down the list of the departments that had vacancies, you know.
No, yeah, that I don't need. Yes, could I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So in a different vein, so the assigned fund transfers to the different, I guess, departments, if you will, are those speeding up purchases? Are these those things we already had in the capital, like, or the operating, and we're speeding them up? Or so we're gonna buy something earlier than we planned?
Very good question. So it's a yes and no answer. So yes, these are all going to outside funds, which is why we're asking your approval again. On the, many of them, for example, I'll take the EMS capital equipment. That is, we're trying to accelerate the purchase of the new rescue. So that, this money would go towards that. And then also, we'd be able to purchase some equipment. Craig would, I believe it was a defibrillator and a stretcher sooner, as opposed to having to wait till either late fiscal '22, fiscal '23. We can accelerate that purchase and get that, you know, when this transfer is done in fiscal '22. Same thing with putting money into the public works, especially for the road fund. $250,000, John will tell you, doesn't go a long way, but it's still something that helps accelerate it. Same thing with the Recreation Improvement Fund. It's going into Saugatuckah Park. One of the things that would be for something new that you haven't seen would be the technology transfer. And that's because one of the big things, our vendor who supply, who we contract for basically our entire line of business, is shifting their model from an on-premises to a cloud-based. And we need to prepare, and there's some technology that has And we need to prepare, and there's some technology that has to get there. And basically, they're moving all of their clients to that model. We'd like to get there sooner rather than later. And this would put us on that path as opposed to having to wait till the fiscal '23 capital request, which would, we'd be at the tail end of, of that. So we'd like to be somewhere in the middle with the vendor and how they're migrating their clients over. So some are existing projects, some would be towards new projects. And, you know, for example, John, you know, putting into the, you know, the public safety, we, we requested to move the 25,000 for the drone that was in the rescue funds request to put that into capital because we think it's a more appropriate funding methodology as opposed to using those dollars. So that's new that you've never seen in the capital. That'd be a new project that would be different.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that very, very much.
Rory?
Hey, Zach, how's it going?
Good, how are you, Councilman?
Good. Obviously, great news with the increase in the surplus here. Now, we enacted the budget in April. The expected surplus of revenues in excess of expenses was around 300,000. How do we get to a big, this big uptick to 1.4 million?
So it's mainly on the expenditure side. So where we saw the increase on the revenue, some was better than expected tax collections than we anticipated. We think we'll be right around a 99% collection rate for our taxes. Also, state revenue, although we may, if you looked at it on a line item basis for the past through meals and beverage taxes, the hotel tax, the pilots, although those numbers would look down on a line item basis, what the state did is they the COVID relief funds that they provided to us made up for the loss in that revenue, plus covered most of our COVID expenditures, probably to the positive side of 150, $200,000. So those would be the swings. And then our departmental revenues are looking better than we expected, especially in the building department. We're seeing better, you know, construction didn't really slow down, permits are, are up. So we, you know, that's where we will see it on the revenue side. Like I said, on the expenditure side, the majority of it is coming from personnel savings due to vacancies.
So all these unanticipated benefits that we're experienced here, experiencing here, these were all unknown at the time we enacted the budget at the end of April?
Well, on the revenue side, it's tough to predict what was going to happen. We didn't know. The governor hadn't put out a final, their, their final recommended for what we were going to get on state aid. So we had to, we were close for fiscal '22, what we thought it was going to come in at, but you know, it's hard. We didn't want to go too far out. And then on the expenditure side, the '22, we thought, you know, we think we're going to be more in line because we're going, we're going. The plan is to staff up these vacant positions because now we know that, you know, COVID is, you know, we, we think we're turning the corner as opposed to where we were when, during the budget process, which is why we tried to keep the, the original, if you remember, the original proposal was 0.9% tax increase. We were still less than one. But again, these are things, you know, when you're putting it together, you know, where looking towards the future, the goal is to staff up. So we expect to have those expenditures. We don't expect it to be completely vacant. If we staff up appropriately, we may see some surpluses in the future and things like overtime, and, you know, we may not need that in those areas. But in terms of personnel, the goal is to be fully staffed in fiscal '22 and not try to stretch these vacancies out because we, we know that everything is turning in the right direction. Where during the budget process, we were still kind of unknown what was going to happen. We didn't know what federal money was coming into the town. We didn't know what state money would be, what the state was going to do. We kind of have a better understanding that the state, you know, can't really, you know, take any of the federal money that's coming our way and use it to replace, you know, appropriations at the state aid level. So those things are, we're, you know, are starting to come clear.
Thank you.
Any that took us pretty far into the agenda. There were a couple items after that.
Yes, there's one item. T, New Wave, business item T is a resolution to support a submission of an application for in-kind support for design and development of the Saga Tucket Park Improvement Project. You also have a communication in your packets from the chair people of the EDC and the Recreation Commission that talks about the Saga Tucket Park Improvement Project, how the two commissions are seeking to be able to do a work session to provide more information to the council on, on what they are proposing in terms of that project. You'll, you're aware that there is a pay-as-you-go project currently in the pipeline for Saga Tucket Park through the Parks and Recreation Department, which involves a DEM grant and improvements to the walking path and the, the fencing and the basketball court, among some other things that are also included in that. But in terms of what the EDC and Rec Commission are looking at further down the road as a long-term master plan for the Saga Tucket Park, one of the items is really developing or redeveloping, re-establishing the original master plan from, from the, from the park, which was developed by the Frederick, Frederick Law Olmsted Firm and which will require additional design and as well as some funding. So the committees are seeking to be able to look at alternative funding sources. And one of those, while it's not funding, it's in-kind design and technical support through the Southeast New England Program Network, and they're seeking your support in submitting a, a grant application in that regard.
Zach, did you have something to add about this?
Not this topic, but I just wanted to circle back to something that Councilman Mackenzie, a question that he asked. If you remember, when we were getting to the final adoption of the budget, we did increase the use of the fund balance to in excess of, I think it was around 880,000, to get us to a 0% tax rate. So we were using surplus from the unassigned fund to balance the, the budget to get to a 0% tax rate. So we were taking into account additional, you know, the additional funds to help balance that as opposed to raising other revenue or.
I think we have one other item, which is for the council to consider via the memo through the planning director, which is requesting that the council pass a resolution for an order of public notice. Sorry, I think my finger on that one. For the zoning amendments to the zoning ordinance for the Section 502.7 Cottage Community. And that, I believe, is the final. Not the final agenda. I'm sorry, that's item U. Ordering the town clerk to advertise order of notice for a public hearing to consider amendments to the zoning ordinance for Article 5, which is the cottage zoning. And there's details on that in Jamie Rabbit's memorandum to, to the council.
Okay, that takes us through. We got another three minutes here. Councilwoman Bergner, you mentioned a question about water supply.
So I, I saw John Choak's memo from the interim report from last week. And so I just had a couple of questions about the memo itself. So it refers to a draft from 2014. And so is that the final document? Who collaborated on that draft? I mean, it's, it's a little confusing. And then who, who is, who are we working with now? Um, I don't know, maybe when, if John.
I think he's here.
I'm here.
Yep.
So that was, it is still a draft. I attended a meeting with the Water Resources Board. I believe DEM was there, and there was a follow-up meeting. So one of the telling things in that report, and I think I had the wrong citation in the memo, I believe, was table three. That if you look at table three, I don't know if you want to pull it up or not.
I don't know if we have time to.
We might not, but I do, I know that residents really want to understand this, so I don't want it to get lost in the.
Yes, I mean, I, I could spend quite some time and try and explain the interrelationship and intricacies of water supply. If, if pressed for time, it would probably be better at another time perhaps because it is very complex and it is very intertwined.
The other question I have, and maybe you can provide it in a future time, is do we have the contract with Suez that we could see? Is, is that something that?
Yeah, we, we have a wholesale agreement with Suez that guarantees us
Yeah.
so many gallons a day. But again, Suez has a finite amount of water. It comes down to water storage, transmission, it, it all interrelated, and it's pretty complex.
I know. I know. I think it's hard for the community to understand. And so I just keep raising the questions that get, get raised out in the community coming back.
Understood. We get the calls every day on what the rationale is. Again, I think on a very high level, the big difference between us and the urban areas, they have reservoirs and have vast reserves. We have very finite reserves, essentially what's in the water tanks.
Gotcha. Thank you, John.
Thank you. And that does take us to 7:30. Are we prepared to start? I do want to note that my camera, for some reason, keeps like knocking me off. I have to keep rejoining. I don't know what's happening to anybody else. If anybody notices, and I don't see it. All right. With that, we are all here. So I would like to welcome everybody to this meeting of the South Kings Downtown Council. It is Monday, June 28, 2021. This is our regular session, beginning at 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag. Susan, if you wouldn't mind.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Susan. And would you please take the role?
Absolutely. Council President Collins.
Here.
Council Vice President Mackenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Bergner.
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso.
Here.
Councilwoman Rose.
Here.
All members are present, attending virtually this evening.
Thank you. That brings us to item four, the approval of minutes of previous meetings.
Rory Mackenzie, I'll make a motion to approve for A, B, and C.
Deborah Kelso, I'll second.
And we have a motion by Councilman Mackenzie, second by Councilwoman Kelso. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously, and that brings us to the consent agenda.
Rory Mackenzie, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Well, second.
Motion by Councilman Mackenzie, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? And that motion carries unanimously as well, and that brings us to licenses. 6A is a resolution granting a victualing license to Taj, the Indian Restaurant and Bar of 49 South County Commons Way, subject to approval by Rhode Island Department of Health issuance of a retail sales tax permit by the Rhode Island Division of Taxation and approval by the Fire Marshal. Application by Devandra. John, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Kenyon, attorney for the applicant Taj LLC. The applicant is here tonight requesting a victualer's license for property located at 49 South County Commons Way. They're proposing to operate an Indian restaurant in a location that was previously licensed to operate as a restaurant. Their proposed hours of operation will be daily from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And I believe the applicant is with us tonight. If he wants to introduce himself and maybe just briefly explain the proposed operations.
And he raises hand. I'm not sure if see, is he on the phone perhaps, John? 219 number. If you are here and you are the applicant for this license, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, number 219, hit star nine to raise your hand.
Yeah, I'm not seeing him on the, the list of other participants. So if it isn't the one on the phone, then he might not be here.
Okay, well, you're, you're doing a good job for him, John. Is there anything changing about the operation or, you know, in terms of hours or?
Well, I, I don't even know if the other restaurant ever opened there. They, they received their licenses and Susan might know better than me, but I don't believe they ever actually started operations. But it's, it's going to be an Indian restaurant, like I said, you know, hours of operation, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And hopefully, we'll be back before you in a few weeks for a liquor license for the same property.
Very good. Do I hear a motion on 6A?
Make a motion to accept 6A. Is that correct what I say?
Approve.
Approve.
Deb Kelso, I'll second that.
We have a motion from Councilwoman Rose, second by Councilwoman Kelso. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Well, please pass the good news along to your client there, John, and thank you for coming and representing him.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everybody.
Right. 6B is a resolution granting a victualing and holiday sales license to New Wave Kitchen, doing business as New Waves Bistro, 99 Fortin Road in Kingston, Rhode Island, subject to approval by the Rhode Island Department of Health issuance of a sales tax permit by the Rhode Island Division of Taxation and approval by the Fire Marshal. Applicant is Matthew Reagan. Right, Matthew, you've been brought in. You just need to unmute yourself. And there you are.
Hey, how you doing?
Very good, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you very much.
So tell us about New Waves Bistro.
Um, I'm not sure we're on the paperwork. It's saying New Wave Bistro, but it would just will be New Wave Kitchen. I don't believe anything I applied for had that name on it.
New Waves Kitchen, tell us about that.
Uh, it's just going to be a farm-to-table restaurant over in the Emporium at URI, 99 Fortin Road. We'll be doing hours from 12 to 8, just lunch and dinner.
All right, very good. Yeah, tell us a little bit about your slate. So it's farm-to-table, it's local farm produce?
Right. Um, we're going to try and use specifically Rhode Island producers and anything that we can't get in the state, we'll just be reaching into New England for that. Um, but yeah, we'll be showcasing local farms in the area. Brandon Family Farm really close to us, Letty Putt Ranch over on Gilbert Stewart. Um, we might partner with some other people in Northern Ireland for our ground beef. And then we'll also be pairing with like yacht club soda for our beverages and fully rooted kombucha we'll have on tap and bold coffee on tap, stuff like that.
Other questions? Councilwoman Bergner?
So are you taking over? I don't know, the, the, the restaurant space next to the Thai place? I forget.
Yeah, that, yep, that's correct. It used to be Mama Phoenix.
Yes.
Mia's Burger Shack a long time ago, as far as I can remember.
Yeah.
Yep, that's the spot.
It's a good spot.
Yeah, I think the area needs something that's a little more updated and, you know, food that's actually coming from the state. I think there should be a good response for that.
I agree. I, I think it's a great, it's a great location. I think that if you're opening, well, you're going to open right away, right? This is.
Uh, we're planning for opening for August, beginning of August, if everything goes as planned. We're finishing up the renovation of the dining room, just really just painting and redoing the floor. And next month, we'll be focusing with the Health Department. I'm applying for the retail sales permit come the first. And then everything should be going smoothly by August.
Right in time for the move-in. Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
Matthew, I'm excited to try it. I'll make a resolution to approve 6B.
All right. Thank you very much.
Deb Bergner, I'll second.
Thank you.
Councilman Mackenzie, second by Councilwoman Bergner. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Good luck, Matthew. I look forward to, uh, to trying some of that local food.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Have a good night.
You too. Thanks.
All right, that brings us to seven communications. Seven A is a resolution adopted June ninth, twenty twenty one by the Barrowville Town Council and School Committee requesting the Governor, Rhode Island Department of Health and the Rhode Island Department of Education to review policies and remove mandatory mask requirements for schoolchildren. That has been received. What would we like to do with that?
Rory McIntyre will make a motion to place seven A on file.
Deb Kelso, second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Kelso. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Seven I is a letter dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty one from Josh Daley, tendering his resignation from the Affordable Housing Collaborative. This has been received. What are we gonna do with it?
Rory McIntyre will make a motion that we send a letter to Josh Daley thanking him for his service and wishing him luck on the planning board.
Deb Bergner, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Seven J is an email dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty one from Bethany Pollack, requesting the town establish guidelines for the behavior of elected officials on public platforms and social media. That's been received. Do I hear a motion? Councilwoman Bergner?
Um, before we act on this, could, I know, I think I know what Mike might say about this issue about people's First Amendment rights to post on social media. I just didn't want, know if he wanted to speak so the public would understand what the limitations or nonlimitations there are.
So, so you're correct, Deb. There, everyone has a First Amendment right to post pretty much anything on social media unless it constitutes a threat of violence or a threat to person or property. You know, the First Amendment, the classic is you can't yell fire in a movie theater. There have been many interpretations of the First Amendment lately in terms of individuals in other towns who have been on the front page in connection with their being unhappy with town officials or town policies, making that unhappiness known in a very public way. And in at least two recent cases, towns have had to pay upwards of twenty five thousand dollars in damages to the ACLU. So again, unless there is something criminal, a person's First Amendment rights include things that can be very ugly, unfortunately.
Thank you. I make a motion to place item J on file.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilwoman Bergner, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any further discussion? Councilman McIntyre?
Mike, I got some questions on this.
Sure.
How about defamation? Obviously, that's civil, not criminal. Certainly acts of that occur on Facebook, social media, things like that.
Yeah.
We can.
The issue, Rory, Rory, legal defamation is an incredibly high hurdle, especially for public officials. The hurdle is so high that you rarely, if ever, see a case which is successful, especially with regard to public officials. So it's not enough to just put a policy in place that says you cannot defame because to prove slander or libel, especially as it relates to town officials, but even non-town officials is frankly, it's next to impossible. And that goes back to the First Amendment right issue. So yeah, I'm sorry, but that's the state of the law that that we have to deal with right now, Rory.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mike.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to seven M, a letter dated June twenty second, twenty twenty one from Lauren Weinstein, tendering her resignation from the Siscical Modeling and Analytical Research Tools Committee, received, placed on file. What would we like to do with that?
I make a motion that we accept Lauren Weinstein's letter. We thank her for her service.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Bergner, second by Councilman McIntyre. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Seven O is a letter dated June twenty third, twenty twenty one from David Palazzetti, Chair of the Recreation Commission, and Larry Fish, Chair of the Economic Development Committee, requesting a joint work session with the Town Council to discuss a vision for revitalization of the Sagatucket River and Park. So let's, I mean, we can take this opportunity to maybe find such a time, or we could do it before a council meeting. We think, you know, half an hour, or, you know, we could even begin at six o'clock if we thought an hour was going to be required. This, Terry, do you have any inkling of how long they expect?
I think based on their letter, you, the council certainly has had in the past, at least some of you, maybe not all of you, the opportunity to hear the vision for the Sagatucket, which was the original study that was done via the EDC back in twenty seventeen, I believe it was, and they presented it in twenty eighteen. What this will do is give them the opportunity with, with the Recreation Commission because the park really falls under the Recreation Commission's purview to be able to present a longer-term plan based on more information and being, and the ability to come up with more funding to support a master plan based on the original plan for the park. So I, I think a half an hour would probably be sufficient for this type of presentation and discussion. It also incorporates a bit about the, the town's anniversary coming up in twenty twenty three. So there's a kind of a dual purpose in that. And it certainly will give them the opportunity to lay things out for the council just for your information and potential further support when it comes to the capital improvement plan and other potential funding. I know funding is also an item because a lot of this is not already incorporated in a long-term capital plan.
Okay, so how do folks feel about maybe the next council meeting, having it during the work session? Councilwoman Kelso?
So I'll just make the motion to approve seven O and leave the scheduling of it to the interim town manager to come up with an appropriate time for us.
Okay, Councilwoman Bergner?
I agree with Councilwoman Kelso. I just want to make note that there's a grant opportunity deadline of July first. So if it's possible that we look to the, the next meeting, that's July twelfth that we have, maybe to try to get, get it in so that the chairs can apply for the grant that they're looking to apply for.
All right, is that, first off, sorry, we had a motion from Councilman Kelso. Do we have, is that a second? I heard you say you support that idea.
Yeah, sure.
Now, further discussion, Councilman McIntyre?
Hi, Terry. I know the memorandum indicated that the, they'd like, I guess their deadline is July twenty first, is meeting on July twelfth. Enough time for them to, I guess, complete the grant application by that date? I would assume yes, but I just want to clarify.
So what I would say is there, there are really two separate things here. There's no harm in a grant application, particularly the one that's noted in the memorandum because it is for in-kind services. It's not, it's not for funding. So there's, there certainly is time. It council can decide the twelfth is fine, or I understand that the town clerk has a number of appointments and potential interviews that have to be undertaken within the near future. So if it has to wait until the twenty sixth, this grant applicant, the application for support, technical support, won't impact, won't impact the delay of another council meeting in order to consider the long-term plan.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bergner?
Thank you. And I just, I just wanted to bring up if this, if there's some expertise on the SMART committee for any grant writing, to bring that up. I know they don't have necessarily specific charges, but just putting that out there, that there's people on the SMART committee who have written grants, received grants that might be helpful in this project as well. So maybe to, maybe invite someone from the SMART committee as a representative just to follow along.
So just to give Terry a little more direction from us, it sounds like Susan might have dibs on the work session for the twelfth for interviews. So if that doesn't, I mean, I think I saw sort of consensus that the twelfth, people are open to doing this on the twelfth, but maybe also the twenty sixth. Everybody good with that? Okay, so Terry, you want to just communicate with those guys and and come up with one of those dates we can do?
Okay.
All right. So we have a motion, we have a second. Let's vote on it. Is there any further discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. And that brings us to item eight, comments from interested citizens. Looks like we have somebody with their hand up. Stephen Dahl?
Yes, am I coming through?
You, we can hear you. Yep.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the Town Council for allowing Cici Dusset to speak for a half an hour about technology safety earlier this evening in the work session. So thank you very much. I encourage everyone who hasn't heard her to see that video when it posts later this week. I want to emphasize that no other authority is going to help us. The state broadband bill allows a loophole for wireless small cells to be placed near our homes instead of hooking up the fiber optics to the premises from pole to building, which is what we require for better, safer broadband service. Thank you very much. And have a good night.
You as well, Stephen. Thank you. Good night. Next up, we have Greg Sweet. All right, Greg, you should be good to go.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Same old question. Mike, have you heard anything about the, or from the landowner on Branch Street?
Um, yes, we're working with his attorney and there's an inspection taking place on July first, a little later this week.
Okay, cool. Thank you very much. Apparently Linda Salvasano resigned tonight. And I hope the investigation still goes on because the investigation wasn't until someone, it wasn't to force somebody to resign. It was to find out the who, what, where, when, and why. So I really hope that that continues so we can find out exactly what happened and by who. And I won't be, I don't think I can make tomorrow's meeting. My, my thought on that, I'm not sure if I said the last time or not. But the, the COVID money that's coming, I don't think it should be used on an example like a skating rink, I think, roller skating, whatever it was last week that was suggested. I think it should be on like inputs, infrastructure type thing, something that's gonna be a big expense to the town. And something that's been a problem for a while, water being one. I don't know if this would apply to the water. But I think that's a, things like that are really important to take care of. And that's it.
Thank you, Greg. Next up, we have Jim Vasquez. All right, Jim, you've been brought in to the meeting here.
Yeah, hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Jim Vasquez and I reside on Oak Street. Directly across the street is major land development going on. There's also a major land development proposed directly behind my house that affects my property. Reading on the agenda tonight, I was so glad to see Rule ten A and that you guys all approved and gave consent to Rule ten A about public speaking. And you spoke earlier about the First Amendment rights on social media. And I think that's an important thing. But on Tuesday, June twenty second, twenty twenty one, just last week, I was making a comment to the planning board. And while I was in the middle of my comment, I was interrupted by Mr. Tights, the attorney for the town of South Kingstown. He said, quote, "I'm gonna cut you off right there." And I didn't even get to make my point. When I asked why, he just said that they've already decided this. And he made other comments among him and other people on the planning board. You can watch it for yourself if you did, if you haven't seen it. I don't know how Mr. Tights knew what I was going to say. He should have let me finish my remarks and then he could have made comments about what I said. Then Mr. Tights said that if I wanted to, I could take the town to civil court if I didn't like the decision of the planning board and the town. He said the matter was done. It was over. Again, I don't know how he knew what I was going to say. And I just wanted to be heard. But he ended up cutting me off. And so I would ask that the town would just make sure that all the boards and committees also adhere to Rule ten A and the Rhode Island Open Meeting Act that allows public comments for up to five minutes or as long as the president of the committee allows. So again, I just want to make that comment. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Sorry about that experience you had. Is there anyone else from the public would like to speak tonight? Susan Axelrod. Welcome, Susan. You've been brought in. You just need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Thank you. I sent a letter last night to the Town Council and to the Town Manager. And I realized I was too late to get onto tonight's agenda, so I'll use public comment because I would like to raise a situation here in town. The Kingston Library, I think, is on the cusp of losing the vast majority of its parking with the reconstruction of Upper College Road by the University of Rhode Island. And I'm not sure how this all came about. The public was not included. Members of the Kingston Improvement Association were never, you know, we were never allowed to weigh in. But the Kingston Library has two spots of its own and all the rest of its parking is on street. And it looks like we're about to lose it all. And I'm concerned about the future circulation and the future of the library. But more so, I'm concerned about, you know, this beautiful historic building that's been there for two hundred and fifty years, losing all of its parking. And what will the town do with this big, beautiful building with no parking? And I think there's time. Hopefully, the Town Council, the Town Manager, there might be some way to intercede with the plans to rebuild Upper College Road. But if there could be some parking reserved for the library, I think it would be more thoughtful and forward-looking than we, the situation. I think it would be more thoughtful and forward looking than we, the situation we have right now.
All right, thank you, Susan, for raising this to our attention. I know maybe other council members have gotten other messages about this issue. So it's something that I think we can ask the town manager about during the town manager's report.
Thank you. There's also, so I attended the meeting that you had with you or I, I don't know, maybe two months ago. And our then-town manager mentioned that he might be in negotiations for the empty lot of land just to the north of the library. That empty lot of land is privately owned. It has a very complicated title. Many, many families own a portion of that property. And there's also historic cemetery there. According to the Pettis Quambskett Historical Society, there may be 200 colonial bodies buried in that space. So that space would not be available to become a parking lot. The town did negotiate using the Kingston Congregational Church parking lot across the street for some overflow parking for the library. But if you've ever tried to run for your life across 138, it's, it's not a safe situation. And I can't even imagine if you had mobility issues or a couple of kids or a stroller with you trying to park at the Kingston Congregational Church, negotiate those granite steps and dash across that intersection without getting killed. I don't think that that's a viable solution for the library. And if all this on-street parking is taken, that will be the only parking for this library. So I'm concerned and I appreciate you interested in this topic and considering maybe following up with this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? K A Sullivan. All right, I'm gonna guess that's Kevin Sullivan. So Kevin, you're in the meeting now, you can unmute yourself.
Thank you, sir. Am I, I unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So I'm Kevin Sullivan, I live here in town, Mulberry Drive. Just wanted to thank all of you again for your service. I watch the council and school committee, et cetera, and the amount of time that you guys put in as, as citizens is mind-boggling. Thanks, and keep up the good work such as it is, and I just echo probably other comments to encourage the continuation of the investigation into that AFL-CIO mailer issue. I understand that Ms. Savastano, the superintendent, has resigned. And they're in a meeting right now in my earphone about selecting an interim superintendent. So I, I know this is not a back and forth, but if you can just answer yes or no, because I don't know a lot of this stuff. Is the selection of a new superintendent strictly at the discretion of the school committee, or does the council get an up or down, yay, nay, regarding that appointment? Or employment?
Yeah, strictly a school committee.
Okay. And, and just if you can explain, how does the, how does this town fill that empty spot? Now, there's an empty slot. I know it's happened before and people were appointed. Is it the next highest vote getter from the previous election or at the discretion of who?
That, that's at the town council's discretion. So typically, we'll probably go through a process where we solicit applications similar to other town commissions and boards. And the council could consider the idea of, you know, if the person who did get the next highest votes applied, you know, if, if we wanted to consider that, you know, sort of a something that trumps out other considerations of candidate qualifications, we could, we could do that. But at this point, it's just, you know, up to the council.
Okay, thank you, Abel. I appreciate that. Is there, what is the process for removing a school committee member who doesn't, isn't inclined to resign on their own? Is there such a process?
So, so Abel, I have to interrupt at this point. This is public comment. None of this is on the agenda. So it, it, and, and it's really, these questions should be directed to the school committee or school committee council.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. And I will finish with just encouraging you folks to select as many of the qualified candidates who applied for the school building committee. I watched the video recorded interviews that you conducted. And it's gratifying to know that there are that many of our fellow citizens who are interested in doing that. And a lot of these people had qualifications, I thought, that were very applicable and very impressive. So I would just encourage you to, when that committee is being reconstructed or added to, that keeping in mind there are ride requirements, that you got to fill some positions there. I would bring as many of those people in as possible for the benefit of the town. And thank you very much. I'm going to lower my hand and mute myself. Appreciate everything you're doing.
Have a good night, Kevin. Thank you. Right. Any, any person who has not spoken before would, who would like to speak? Please raise your hand now. George. Right, George, just please state your name for the record once you unmute yourself.
Yeah, hi, it's Jocelyn. So I don't really have much to say, except that I want to encourage you to continue the investigation. There's a great deal, including data breach, that's deeply concerning to, thus the anonymous name that is concerning to senior citizens and all citizens. We need, I, I have asked you, and you also have a letter in the consent agenda tonight, requesting our report back to the citizens on how our data is protected. And I expect that report, and I'm going to continue to ask for it. And I don't want to appraise it because I don't want to appraise anything. But what I want you to do is be responsive to the citizens. It's not directed at the town clerk's office for sure. It is directed at the global protection of our data, both children's, adults, and senior citizens in the town. I'm not sure we've ever had an inclusive report on how our data is protected, how often passwords are changed, who has access to our data, how that data is managed and protected, what is the security systems that are in place in our informatic systems. The world has changed enormously in the face of the pandemic. We are doing things that we never thought of doing in the past, such as online voting registration and, you know, walk-in voting and online registration for all kinds of things, like our driver's licenses and our car registration. I need to know, and I think the community needs to know, and certainly seniors need to know, how is our data protected? So you're holding a special section to talk about 5G and about things that maybe might, might not concern a lot of citizens. I would ask you to produce a report that states to all citizens, how is our data and our confidential information protected? And so I'm going to ask it again, and I'm going to continue to ask it. I'm going to ratchet it up every month until we get a report on how are you protecting our electronic data? So I appreciate you listening, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin. Any other comments from anyone who hasn't spoken before? Rich Morrissey. Are we having trouble getting Rich over here?
I see him down in the participants list, but he lowered his hand.
Okay. All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? And you see Greg Sweet has raised his hand again. Bring him back in. All right, Greg.
Yeah, I apologize. I meant to say this the first time around. The investigation to me is above and beyond what a retainer would cover. I think Mike is probably due more than what the retainer is for, because these are definitely above and beyond circumstances. Just for what that's worth.
All right, thanks, Greg. All right, any final comments? Nice. Kevin, again.
Okay, I unmuted, can you hear me, Abel?
Yes.
Yes, and I would just, I'm sorry for the double dip, but the presentation that was made to you folks just before your work session, I tried to do screenshots of her PowerPoint, I assume it was. But she said she was going to mail that to you guys. Can, is that something that you can make available through a link in the town to get that? I just say, you know, I am not a wireless radiation alarmist. But she put a lot of credible possible evidence up there that's worth looking at. Logistically, to run hardwire everywhere is not feasible, it's not economically possible. But looking at whatever radiation may be involved from this wireless technology that's so prevalent, I think is wise, and maybe some kind of a mix to mitigate. Anyway, I would like to see that, and if it's, if it's possible, and I will mute and will not triple dip. Thank you for bringing me in again.
All right, thank you, Kevin. We can ask about that. All right, any comments from council members? Councilwoman Rose?
Sorry, I just want to apologize that I keep turning my camera off. My allergies are so bad today, and I keep popping my contacts out. And the new puppy that you've all seen in my camera now has chewed up my only pair of glasses. So if you see my camera off, I apologize. I'm still listening. I'm just putting contacts back in.
All right, thank you for that explanation. Just, Councilwoman Burden?
Thank you. I just wanted to just speak a little bit about the investigation. I know that parents are concerned that we might be wrapping up, and I think, just want to put it out there that I feel that we need to do a complete investigation because we have no idea what our liability and risk is with this exposure. We, we, you know, we only have a little bit of information. And we need the full set of facts, because I'm also hearing that, that parents do intend to do additional litigation against us. So I would hope that the community hears us, that we're going to do a complete investigation. I know it's very difficult for parents, I've been contacted by some parents who are concerned. I'm sure some of you have been in contact with other residents for other matters. They reach out and they don't feel comfortable coming to the microphone. They love their teachers. They don't want to be ostracized and not included. You know, it's a small town, soccer games or whatever, teams. So I just want people to know that I'm personally committed to making sure that we have all the information. I don't want the town. I just don't want to end the investigation early, and then six months down the road, we, we're, we're dealing with some other thing. When it's in this fresh time period where there's information and people available to talk to, so I wanted to express that. I hear those parents who are still asking questions and hoping for information. We have the benefit of information they don't have, so they're very much anxious. And to, to be a little empathetic to people who have patiently waited since April 26th for information. So I wanted to say that. And then I had a couple of questions that I'll, I'll ask Terry during the town manager's report. And then that's it. Thank you.
Councilman McEntee?
Mike Rissillo, if I'd like to ask you questions relative to filling the vacancy on the school committee, would I have to add an agenda item?
Yeah, let's, let's go ahead and add an agenda item, Rory.
Okay, I'll make a motion to add an agenda item relative to the discussion of filling the vacancy on the school committee.
A second.
Motion by Councilwoman McEntee, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries unanimously.
Mike, as far as that process, would we sort of treat that similarly to how we treat filling vacancies on any other board and commissions?
That, that would, yes, Rory, that would be my absolute guess. When you fill a vacancy for any position, whether it's the school committee or a board or a commission, council has the discretion to follow a policy that it's comfortable with. So you can use the interview methods that you've used in the past. You can put out a request to see if who it is that's interested in filling the vacancy. Or you can just appoint someone. So all of those options are open to the council.
Okay, when will we make a decision as to do one of the things you just named, i.e. for example, put out a, a notice that we'd like to, I don't know, solicit interest of anyone interested in the vacancy?
So I would suggest that we place this matter on the first meeting in July for discussion of process, and then you can work from there.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to, I guess, request the town manager put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
All right, very good. Any other comments from council members? I will just briefly remark that I was happy to attend the high school graduation with a couple of our other members here. It was really heartwarming and amazing to see the talent on display of some of our students and the music and the singing. So just a really joyful day. I couldn't let that go by without remarking on it. Similarly, we had our first pride event here in town, which was also fantastic. Out of a storybook, you know, there's a rainbow at the end of the night. So I want to congratulate the organizers of that event. It was really nice to see everybody out and about after, you know, years of being cooped up inside here to see such joyful occasions. So I'm happy to see that. I guess that brings us to the town managers.
Okay, just a few things. First, I'll touch upon the Kingston Library and Ms. Axelrod's request. We do plan on meeting with Representative We do plan on meeting with representatives from the university as well as our library director and have the discussion on how we may be able to explore some options with retaining parking for the Kingston Library. So that will be, will be in the works to look at how we might be able to do that. So, um, secondly, just as a reminder, you, the council has a work session, second work session for the American Rescue Plan funding scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM via Zoom. That's posted on, on the website. This work session is specific to nonprofit and outside agencies who will present the council proposals for funding consideration. You have seen some of those already. We have since received more proposals, which you will, you will also receive. And of course, the, the work session is open, so there could be other agencies that may choose to attend and present tomorrow evening. In line with that, the council was originally considering July 12th for the public hearing related to American Rescue Plan funding. You can decide whether or not you'd like to stay with the 12th if you feel that's enough time and the necessary notices would need to be posted this week. Or if you'd prefer to consider authorizing a posting of notice at the July 12th meeting for a public hearing on the 26th, it, it would provide more time for review of all of the, the outside agency proposals. It would quite frankly, give staff a little bit more time to review and refine a final recommendation for, for the council. So those are, those are your options. If you'd like to stick with July 12th, you can certainly do so. We, we also, or you also talked about opening a public hearing potentially on the 12th with the possibility of continuing it if there was more interest and discussion to be had to the, to the second meeting in July. So those things you'll need to consider.
Uh, just on that topic, is everybody still sort of comfortable with the current plan? Open it on the 12th? You know, ideally, we just have enough information at that point to, but with the possibility of continuing it, if we feel like there's, we need more time. Is that good with everybody still? Councilwoman Berger?
Thank you. I, I, I'm not sure if I'm hearing Terry a little differently, but I think that it sounds like we could use a little bit more time. The staff, it's, it's July. It might be people's time to take time off. I don't know. So just trying to be sensitive to people scheduling to try to turn it around in just two weeks. I didn't know if I was hearing that we, that would be better to have the public hearing happen on the 26th. So to me, I'd rather have more time. The public, the webpage is up, but just today, I think, and I haven't checked, the projects aren't available for people to look at, to weigh in yet. So they, they're, they're up now, I think, but tomorrow and the public outside agencies is up now, but it, people might want to have input. And then I'm noticing that the Saga Tucket project with the EDC and there's an outside agency proposal. So the, I want to sort of work efficiently and, you know, coordinate it in some way that the outside agency is proposing something to the Saga Tucket. Is it, is it appropriate that we look at it in the context of what's already being approached with the EDC and the Rec Commission? So there's a lot there that I just wanted to be purposeful and not, um, I don't know. It seems like there's a lot of interest there and where the best, like ownership of that project is. So I don't know. I was going to bring it up later when we talk about that in-kind services thing, but there's that outside agency and there's that. So I don't know if the timeline, if it would be better just to push it. I think probably pushing it to the 26th is a good thing, but I'm open to other people.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman McEntee?
I agree with Deb Berger. I think if the town manager's recommendations is not ready by the first meeting in July, I don't think it's, I think it's premature for a public hearing. So I think we should do it the second meeting in July. And if we want to have a second public hearing, then we could go into first, uh, first meeting in August. I'm fine with that, too. And then enact it at that meeting. But certainly, I do not think we should have a public hearing if the recommendation by the town manager is not final.
Very good. And, okay, so I, I think we have three folks here at least, Terry. So let's just sort of push that back to the 26th.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and then one other item at the last council meeting, Councilman McEntee did ask about the possibility of returning in person for the council into council chambers for, for a, an in-person meeting. It would still have to be a hybrid meeting. There is still an executive order in place that requires remote accessibility to participate in public meetings. We can, we have, our IT department has coordinated the technology and the equipment in the council chambers to be able to have the council come in and be in person on July 12th, if that's what the council chooses to do. The technology is a temporary. It's certainly not what we would be recommending if this were a long-term requirement in terms of what legislation might come down the pike for future requirements of accessibility remotely to participate in public meetings. But we do have the, the, the ability to have the council come in, be able to meet in the chambers, to have a hybrid meeting where the public would also be able to come into the chambers and also attend via Zoom remotely. So that's a council decision as to whether or not you'd like to proceed for July 12th. If the legislation doesn't pass for requiring hybrid meetings going forward through the Open Meetings Act, it, we will revert back to the previous Open Meetings Act law, which requires in-person participation and attendance at public meetings.
So again, let's just get a sort of temperature check here. People comfortable moving to indoor in-person meeting on the 12th?
Oh, I think temperature check is an operative word for this evening, right? There's no AC in there. So comfortable, probably not, but willing, absolutely.
Okay, very good. I, I think, yeah, we're, we're going to give it a shot, Terry. Let's try and make it happen.
Okay, we will provide you with some information with regard to council and use of laptops and the like, because the council will not be zooming from their laptops. We have the technology to have a wide-range camera for the dais so that every council person can be seen, but we'll give you, we'll send you that detail.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add that that's how the town of Bristol does it, too. One of the other towns I represent, there is, it's not possible to have all those individual laptops, but there is a camera that looks at all of you. So it works.
We won't be reinventing the wheel. That's good to hear. All right, anything else in the town manager's report, Terry?
Just one final item, which is a reminder that Sunday, 4th of July, there will be the annual celebration at Old Mountain Field. As the council knows, you've, in receipt of an invitation to attend, and this will resume after a year of no celebration. So we do anticipate it to be well attended. That's all I have.
Any questions for Terry? Councilwoman Berger?
Thank you. I had a question about the, the meeting with the URI staff in the parking at Kingston, Kingston Library. Is that something that I could attend if I wanted to join you? Or I guess it, it had me thinking back to two weeks ago when Abel had said that he and Emily had met with Ride. And it has me thinking like, could we participate in meetings like that? And, you know, should, you know, do we just not participate in things like that? Or how, how does, how do the roles of the council work? Because I'm just curious about participating if I could.
So that's a great question, Councilwoman Berger. I, I'm going to defer to Mike. Is, is there any, um, requirement or reason that a count, a single council person could not? And if there's a policy in place that I'm not aware of, to be quite honest?
I, I'm not sure of any policy that's in place, but there would be nothing that would prohibit a single council person from attending if, in fact, that's okay with the group that's meeting. So sometimes, and I, I don't think that's the case for this particular item, but sometimes it's better for council members not to be at meetings with the administrative staff because the council is going to be voting on, giving direction, et cetera. But from, but that doesn't appear to be one of these cases.
I, I just wasn't sure, you know, if, you know, what the role, so, you know, does the council say, yes, we can send somebody? What if the council doesn't want it to be person A, they want it to be person B? You know, I, I, that was what I was thinking, you know? We didn't, we didn't know what happened two weeks ago. And so I didn't, you know, I just don't know how those things work out if it's a behind-the-scenes thing that we just ask about.
Yeah, so obviously there are liaisons for a whole number of committees, et cetera. This is sort of, you know, more of an ad hoc type thing. And, you know, any council member is certainly free to call the manager and say, hey, what's up with this? Or I'm really interested. Could you provide me more information, et cetera? I, Abel, you've got some thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if this is a meeting that interests you, Deb, and, you know, the participants want to have you there. And I think, I think as long as we don't have three members there, that's great. The more we're informed about stuff that's going on, the better. So I, I don't know. I don't have an issue with you participating, certainly, or, or other council members. And I mean, ideally, similar meetings are happening, you know, people down are interested in certain. I see other hands are raised, though, so let me call them. Councilwoman Kelso?
So what happens if three of us want to go?
Then we would have to advertise.
That's correct. If three of you want to go, we would have to do 48 hours notice, et cetera. Yes. If two, you're okay, obviously.
So what if three of us wanted to go, but we just, I guess we wouldn't go if we didn't want to participate? So we, we can't just go and be quiet, right?
Well, and that, and you know, Deb, you raise a good point, but that becomes a situation where it just isn't going to look good. And the reality is, if three or more of you are at a meeting that is not some kind of social setting, and even social settings you should be careful about, I think that would raise a, a lot of issues and you'd be in a very defensive mode. So I would not advise it.
All right, I hear you. Thanks.
Councilwoman McEntee?
Uh, Mike, question relative to the, the parking here at URI. Is it possible that we could, by relinquishing or giving up the parking spaces, that we could sort of negotiate that they have to reserve, URI has to reserve certain spots for use of the library?
Yeah, so I don't, you know, Rory, you're asking a good question and I, maybe Terry know, I have not been involved with those negotiations, so I'm not sure what we're getting in return. It, it hasn't come to me yet for review. Maybe Terry can help.
At this point, I don't have that information, Councilman McEntee. That's, I've not been involved in those discussions either, so I'm not really aware of where that stands. I am aware that there was some discussion about the property potentially behind the library, which in fact, Ms. Axelrod was correct. It's, it's, it's owned by a family. It's complicated. It doesn't look promising, but I, I don't have enough information with regard to any of the other pieces of this at this stage. So we would have to really meet and I need to get my arms around this one. Not sure.
Well, also, no agreement can be signed without your, the council's approval. So it's certainly going to come to you at some point.
My understanding is the construction is already started. So if the construction started and parking spots are removed, at that point, we can't negotiate, right, Mike? That'd be past consideration? Can't do that?
I, you know, I, I'm going to have to look into this also, Rory. I'm ju, I am just not familiar with what's happening.
Terry, I'd just like to implore you for those negotiations and discussions with URI. Definitely important, we need some sort of parking for the library. I mean, certainly, if you can't park, you can't use the library. So I just think that have the availability, otherwise it's not going to get the use. And I'm just a big library advocate, so hopefully we can get what we want here.
Understood.
Uh, Councilwoman Berger, is your hand raised a new or is that?
That's, that's another question, another topic, not on the library.
Okay, I, I think maybe we're done with the library discussion for the moment, so go ahead.
So I asked in the work session about the memo from John Shock regarding water supply. And as I was in this meeting, I was thinking about how the real issue, I think, is educating the community about a very complex topic. You know, you know, I could give that memo out, I, I could share that memo, but I think if we could, I don't know, do some sort of proactive education, like five commonly asked questions about why there's a water ban, really simple, like John's very well-versed, very knowledgeable, but we need it like a very simple, like, this is why. Like John said, it's a matter of the other communities, like the question would be, why do other communities not have a water ban? Other communities have a reservoir. Maybe five or six questions that we could always point community members to so that we would have that. Because if it's going to be an annual ban, then we need, then the questions would just need to be reviewed and fresh. But I just, I'm just trying to help the community not vent on social media or, or be angry when we could provide some simple information. I don't know if that would be, I don't want to ask John, but maybe some sort of solution, maybe the staff could work out that there's more public information accessible to them. And then Rory asked about the Zoom. And I guess it, just my, my other question I'll get to about the Saga Tucket and the project and the outside agency thing, that's my other note. Thank you.
And, yeah, just following up on what Deb just said, maybe this is an opportunity for one of those YouTube videos. I know that staff was making some of those, you know? Probably five to 10 minutes of discussing sort of water supply. I, I mean, maybe it's a few videos, but something that could be done.
I, I understand what you're looking for, and I think that's something that certainly can be put out there as public awareness in, in a, in layman's terms and FAQs and potential video. Yeah.
All right. So that, that was the, that was it, Terry, for?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. That brings us to appointments. I don't think we have any appointments to make tonight, but we have discussed that we're going, going to be making appointments to school building committee, or it was referenced tonight, also to the school committee itself. There's an opening that we will need to make a appointment for. I don't, you know? I, tell me, Mike, if you think we need to have that discussion next meeting, or if we can just, now that, I mean, appointments is on here as an agenda item. So theoretically, we could talk about.
Yeah, but, but you don't have on the appointments to the school committee and it's, it's too broad. Now, having said that, you can certainly add to the agenda a discussion and see where everyone's at and, 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 but you just can't vote on it, if that makes some sense.
Right. Okay, so here we are in appointments. I'd be interested in having that conversation if you guys want, because, you know, potentially we can just start soliciting for applications for the school committee position following tonight's meeting rather than waiting two weeks. So I'll, you know, if you want to have that conversation now, we'd need that motion. Councilwoman Berger?
Thanks, Abel. Just a quick question. Do we have a formal resignation letter? Thanks, Abel. Just a quick question, do we have a formal resignation letter from Emily Kamisky? Do we need that to do anything, or?
I believe there was a formal resignation letter, but I, it doesn't come to us, as far as I know. So in the, in the past, first of all, maybe we should just have the, can we have the motion to discuss the school committee vacancy? If we want to talk about it.
Oh, Deb Kelso, I'll make a motion that we add the school committee vacancy to the agenda for discussion purposes.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Kelso, a second by Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion, anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so in, in the past, you know, there've been resignations, even almost mass resignations a couple of years ago. And I don't remember that those resignation letters ever came to the town council. Nevertheless, the way the charter is written, we have the ability to appoint the new members to fill those vacant seats. The, the process by which we do that is really open to us. We can sort of make those rules up as we go. In the past, it was just the same as, as filling vacancies on our other boards and commissions. Now, it's advertised in the paper, advertised online, you know, people submit their applications. Tried and true method, so I, I don't know, is, are there other ideas about how to, how to go about soliciting applicants? That people want to pursue? Councilwoman Bergner, your hand is up first, but that might be from before, so. Councilwoman Kelso, your hand is up as well.
Oh, I just have a question from Mike. In order for us to proceed tonight, to come to an agreement on how we want to proceed, would we need to take a vote on that? And are we out of bounds by taking that vote?
Yeah, no, you are totally correct, Deb. We cannot take a vote to, on how to proceed tonight. I, I thought the purpose of the discussion was to see where everyone wants to go with it, so that we will know what direction we'll be taking, when we can get this officially on the agenda for July 12th.
Right. So, all right, then Abel, my comments are, yes, I would like to solicit applications from the public, people who are interested. But then again, we're going to need that on July 12th's agenda to vote on that going forward.
So my point here, Mike, I don't remember ever having that conversation before when we had vacancies, like, we had to set up some type of special process for school committee.
You do not have to, I, I don't disagree. You don't have to set up, I think, Councilman McIntyre asked, how do we go about doing this? And I just told you, it's up to you to decide the process. You can advertise for positions, or you don't have to advertise. You can each come up with your own thoughts on who you'd like to see appointed and submit names. And then you could just appoint, you could interview, or you don't have to interview. There's, there's nothing that requires you to do one thing over another.
So, okay, so I'm just wondering if, if people in the next two weeks submit an application because they want to be on the school committee, is that okay?
Yeah, of course it is. I, people can send in whatever they want to you.
And then at the next meeting, we can say, we would like to schedule interviews at the next meeting.
I, I would recommend that you would say at the next meeting, let's schedule interviews and also make sure people understand that they still have time to send in applications, so that they're not, you know, you don't want to have a cutoff as of July 12th. I, I don't think that would make sense, or be legal.
That, Councilwoman Bergner?
I, I agree, I think, with Deb Kelso, I think she said to advertise, you know, to advertise and to do interviews and treat it like any other board and commission. I think, I think we all feel like it's very important to get it right, to get the right person in there to really help move the school committee forward. So I, I just want to do it the best possible way that we can, in the most transparent way. So I think while I would be anxious to put someone in place, I don't want to rush what, you know, really needs to be authentically driven with good input. I mean, I actually thought at one point, we, we probably should sit down with the chair and the vice chair and say, give us some insight into what you think is an ideal candidate, or, you know, so that we, because we don't have that, if we don't meet with them, so it's hard to know what they want, or what, not what they want, or what they would like to see in a, in a fellow member, that would give them the best running start that they could. You know, it's going to be the middle of July, end of July, before they get another person. And I don't, I don't know how, how much of a deficit not having one person really is to them. But I, I believe that we should treat it like any other process, solicit applications and interview. I mean, there's nothing to say that the school committee, the chair and the vice chair couldn't participate in the interviews, right? It's really whatever we would decide, so we can make it as a little different and a little more inclusive, so that we get it, even though we appoint, we get it right, get their input, hear their questions. So that's all.
Councilwoman Rose?
So would we have to, if we, I, I love that idea of meeting with members of the school committee leadership. What would we have to do to set that meeting in motion?
So there is an exception to the open meetings law for establishing a, a meeting. I assume you'd want to have a, if the council of majority agrees, I assume you would want to have a night for a special meeting, and you'd probably want Susan to send out some type of doodle poll or something as to when all of you and whoever you want from the school committee to sit down and discuss. So, so that, setting up of a meeting is something that you can do without violating the OMA this evening.
So I can suggest that, you know, as a second to what Councilwoman Bergner just said.
Yes, yes, you can, and you, and you can actually decide that issue right now if you wanted to.
Well, it occurs to me, since we were going to potentially have an agenda item at the next meeting on this topic, that we could just invite the school committee chairwoman and vice chair to, you know, be a part of that discussion on the, on the agenda item, so.
Yeah, you could do that.
I know they don't usually have meetings on Monday nights, so something that might be.
This is going to be on a Tuesday, isn't July 12th, I think, or maybe I'm wrong. I, let me just check.
It's a Monday.
I'm sorry, all right, I, I thought the holidays in August, obviously, okay. It is a Monday, yes.
So, yeah, so if we could invite them to our next council meeting and have that as discussion, as we're trying to come up with our, you know, application process. Does that make sense? Councilwoman Bergner, is your hand up again? All right, I think we've, we've settled that for the moment. No other appointments to make, that brings us to new business. Item 11, 11C is a resolution authorizing the emergency medical services department to accept grant funding in the amount of $40,000 from the Rhode Island State Office of Rural Health to support implementation of the community paramedicine program in the town of South Kingstown, further described in a memo from the chief EMS, the interim town manager dated June 10th.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve 11C.
Deb Bergner, I'll second.
A motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner, any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously, great work getting that grant funding. Item D, resolution authorizing the abatement of uncollectible tangible personal property taxes for 2010 in the amount of $4,865.24 and uncollectible motor vehicle taxes for 2010 in the amount of $46,023.90 for a combined total of uncollectible taxes in the amount of $50,889.14, described in a memo from the finance director, the town manager, dated June 50.
Deb Bergner, motion, oh Rory, go Rory.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11D.
Deb Bergner, I'll second.
By Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. E is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Taska Ford of Berlin, Connecticut for a 2021 Ford XLT Explorer four-wheel drive vehicle in accordance with state of Rhode Island master purchase agreement number 563, an amount not to exceed $38,000, including contingency and allied police equipment upfitting, further described in a memo from the police chief to the interim town manager, dated June 16. Do I hear a motion?
Deb Kelso, motion to approve item 11E.
Jessro, second.
Motion by Councilwoman Kelso, second by Councilwoman Rose, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Oh, Councilwoman Bergner, raising your hand.
Is this one of the, the cars that would become a, like, the all-black car? Like, in the switch over from the white and the black to the all-black, just a quick question?
So to, to answer that question, I believe the intention of this vehicle is to be an unmarked vehicle for, more for the use of a community outreach program, as was stated in, in Chief Yuen Chow's memo, to have a plainclothes officer in, in the position of community resource officer. So I, well, I can't confirm that, I know Deputy Chief Buco is here, but I, my sense is that it would not be a, a black vehicle. It will probably be a white SUV that's unmarked for community purposes.
Thank you, I must have missed that part.
Any other questions? Is there anyone opposed to the motion? All right, that motion carries unanimously. G is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to grain and concrete curb retaining wall materials to the following bidders at the unit prices bid, further described in the memo from the public services director to town manager. So this is item G, there's a very similar, item H, we could potentially bundle these items.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11G and 11H.
Deb Kelso, second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Kelso, discussion? Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. 12I is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Republic Services of Fall River, Massachusetts for the regular refuse disposal and recycling package at the unit cost per pickup bid for the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2023, further detailed in the memo from Public Services Director to interim town manager dated June 22nd. And the second J is, and K are also the same contractor.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve 11I, 11J, and 11K.
Deb Kelso, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Kelso, any discussion? Anyone opposed? Those motions carry unanimously. L is a resolution authorizing an award of bid originally granted on June 12th, 2017 to UniFirst Corporation of Warwick for uniform leasing services at the unit prices bid for the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, further described in the memo from the Public Services Director to the interim town manager dated June 23rd.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve 11L.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Rose, any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Our next three items all relate to the Marina leases, but these are bigger items, I suppose, we can take them one at a time. M is a resolution approving a lease of municipal waterfront property at Marina Park on Salt Pond Road Wakefield to Marina Park Associates for the operation of a Marina and to authorize the interim town manager to execute a lease agreement on behalf of the town. Said lease shall provide a 20-year term in accordance with specific terms and conditions, including establishment of fixed annual rental payments, as specified in a memo from the interim town manager to the town council dated June 23rd, 2021.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve 11M.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Rose. I know that you've spent a number of minutes and perhaps longer discussing these, even in executive session. But Terry, if you wanted to give a brief overview of maybe MN and O at this point, just for the public's benefit.
Sure, the town has properties at Marina Park that have had long-term leases with a number of tenants. Most recently, I believe it was last year, there were a renewal of leases for two other Marinas. Recently, the town manager's office negotiated with Marina Bay Marina Park Associates, as well as Ram Point Marina, to reestablish leases. Both of these tenants have been at Marina Park for decades. Marina Park Associates in particular, they're also known as Marina Bay, are, have been negotiate, have negotiated for an additional 15, 15-year lease with a five-year extension option. And it would basically reflect the Marina Park lease policy that the council has set in place for, I believe it's since 2002. And in 2019, the town went out for a licensed appraisal firm to do a market survey of the leased Marina Park property to really establish a framework for reference for negotiating future rents. And so with that in mind, as well as the Marina Park lease policy, the, the lease from Marina Park Associates would be 15 years, five-year option with a 2% annual escalator for the duration of the lease. And with these leases, what is new is the establishment of a Marina Park Common Area Maintenance Fund, where a portion of the, the rent will go into a fund dedicated to improving the common areas in the Marina Park area for the benefit of the tenants and the public. So that, those, that piece has been established for the two previous tenants leases that were renewed last year and would be the same for Marina Park Associates. And then Ram Point Marina, their long-term lease would be established at, at a 30-year lease with no option for any renewal or extension. That, that would also include a 2% annual escalator for that lease and contribution to the Marina Park Common Area Maintenance Fund as well. And then there is a secondary lease for Ram Point for the lease of 320 linear feet along the riverfront property adjacent to Marina Park. They currently lease it, it was separated out for, for this purpose because there are riparian rights associated with that. And this lease would be for a short-term, five-year period. Again, it would, it would have a 2% annual escalator and Common Area Maintenance Fund contribution. There any questions?
I don't see any, all right. So we have a motion and a second on item M, is there anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Item N is the resolution approving a lease of municipal waterfront property at Marina Park on Salt Pond Road Wakefield to Ram Point Marina, for operation of a Marina and to authorize the interim town manager to execute a lease agreement on behalf of the town. Said lease shall provide a 30-year term in accordance with specific terms and conditions, including establishment of fixed annual rental payments and as specified in a memo from the interim town manager to the town council dated June 23rd.
Rory McIntyre, I'll make a motion to approve 11N.
Deb Bergner, I'll second that.
By Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner, any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Item O, a resolution approving a lease of municipal waterfront property and associated riparian rights at Marina Park on Salt Pond Road to Ram Point Marina, for the operation of a Marina and to authorize the interim town manager to execute a lease agreement on behalf of the town. Said lease shall provide a five-year term in accordance with specific terms and conditions, including establishment of fixed annual rental payments and as specified in a memo from the interim town manager to the town council dated June 23rd.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11O.
And Deb Burgner, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously as well. That brings us to item P, a resolution authorizing tax collection procedures, as shown on exhibit one attached to the agenda.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11P.
Deb Burgner, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Q, a resolution authorizing the extension of an award of contract granted May 14th, 2018 to Minnesota Life for term life and accidental death and dismemberment insurance for the period July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, in accordance with the rates below, further detailed in the memo from the procurement administrator to the interim town manager and finance director dated June 22nd.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11Q.
Deb Burgner, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Bergner. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Item R, resolution appointing someone to serve as the town council representative on South Kingstown Narragansett Senior Advisory Council and directing the town clerk to advertise for applications from interested South Kingstown residents over the age of 60, to serve as citizen members on the senior advisory council for a two-year term, further described in a memo from the interim town manager to the town council dated June 23rd. Okay, so we need to discuss this one. Who would like to serve on this committee? The council.
I'm willing to do it. I was, you know, I didn't want to claim ownership of this because Councilwoman Sicily Banano contacted me, but I'm willing to do it. It meets four times a year, but if someone else would like to do it, I'm happy to acquiesce to that.
All right. Anybody else want to volunteer for this? I think you might have it, Deb.
That's fine. That's perfectly fine.
All right. I will make a resolution appointing Councilwoman Kelso to serve as the town council representative on the South Kingstown Narragansett Senior Advisory Council. Do I hear a second? All right. Motion by me, second by Councilman McIntyre. Anyone, any more discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. And then Susan, you can add that to the list of positions that we're advertising for, of course. Thank you. Item S, a resolution authorizing fund transfers, as shown on exhibit two attached here too, and further described in the memo from the finance director to the interim town manager dated June 21st, 2021.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11S.
Jess Rose, I'll second.
Motion by Councilman McIntyre, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion on this one? We did discuss it for some time in the work session, Councilwoman Bergner.
Um, yeah, I just, I just wanted to know if Zach wanted to just give a few comments about, he did a really nice job of explaining how some of the money would be used when I asked the question about, is it speeding up purchases? Are they need new purchases, new items, and as well as just sort of explain OPEB to the community? And if Zach could just do a replay of the first act, that would be great.
Yes, can we bring Zach?
And sorry, Zach, but you did a great job.
All right, Zach, welcome back.
Thank you. I will, I lost whatever conversation happened as I was being brought in, but basically the memo is requesting from the council to make a series of transfers to various capital accounts and other multi-year funds based on a projected revenue surplus that the town has. As you know, in the charter that if we don't move the funds, the funds will ultimately move to the unassigned fund balance, but by putting them into these capital funds, we can accelerate purchases or do new purchases that, you know, weren't considered at one point. So a good example would be the drone for the police department reallocating that from federal funds into capital. Also, what I didn't mention in the work session was the planning department putting funds aside so that they can do additional studies for design and architectural guidelines to try to accelerate those projects that I know are concerns of the council. Also, fully funding our OPEB contribution to our, our OPEB trust fund and authorizing that request so that we can maintain our funded status, which is slightly right at around 100% funding for fiscal year 20 and 21. And also putting funds into the, you know, capital improvements for public works and public safety. This allows, again, it allows us to accelerate some projects or take on projects that we couldn't consider due to the surplus that we have. And any other questions? I'm happy to entertain.
Any questions for Zach? All right, seeing none. We have a motion. Is there anyone opposed? Councilwoman Bergner?
I opposed, I just wanted to make a comment that I think when the community constantly sees that we're putting money back into the reserve, the undesignedated, which is at the max, and that we're appropriating funds to the reserve fund transfer, the question really is, you know, make sure you're not overtaxing us, or you're not asking for more than you need. And I just want to just put that out there to the community that it's really important that we're, some of these things where we got a little bit more revenue, we got 300,000 more revenue, but we also, and we also saved a little bit of money from the positions. However, we don't really want to typically always, for the most simplification, overtax people by a million dollars every year when they would probably want that money in their own control. So I just, I agree with the transfers and the amounts, and I understand it all. I just want the community and all of us to know that we can't, it can't be a situation where we're constantly in this shift over, and again, maybe just not taking as much, or if you don't need as much, not taking. It's just about being a little bit more attuned to the community who might not want to fund it through this process in this path. That's all.
Sure, and I can address that if, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the goal is, you know, it's twofold. One, we need to maintain our healthy reserve balance because almost 86% of our tax levy comes from residential. We don't have a, you know, as other communities have a stronger commercial base, so it has to come from there. Our fun, unassigned fund balance and our OPEB plan are two, are the two, two major metrics that the fund, the rating agencies look at for us to maintain. You know, we have the highest bond rating in the state with three or four other communities, and for us to maintain that, we're, you know, we're limited to what we can do to keep that. The goal is not to tax, the goal is to try to find that unique balance of, you know, where it all works. And we take, you know, every year we'll go through, you know, this is a, you know, these are annual transfers that will take place. Last year was unique because of COVID. We didn't request any. But this year, we're kind of back on track of where you historically been for the last probably 15 years or so. The goals will come from, also, we'll take direction from the council too. When we get to the budget planning and work sessions, you know, we'll try to ask and see what your, what your desires are. So if it's try to maintain, you know, not raise taxes or stay in that range, I will work whatever guidelines you provide me. I'll present you what you, to get you there. You know, it may not be easy, but we'll do, I'll do my best to fit within the goals and objectives that you have.
I, I believe in you, Zach. I trust you. I don't, I, it's not 100% me. It's other people saying, if you're constantly living like this, you know, I just feel like it's my due diligence to sort of ask the question that seems sort of obvious. So I appreciate your thoroughness and your responsiveness, and I really do value you. Thank you.
And you do, and again, in 22, we did raise what we would use from the unassigned fund balance to help balance the budget to maintain that. We were significantly higher in years past what we were using for the fund balance. That was then stepped down. We kind of brought that back up and, you know, depending on the needs, next year will be an interesting budget process because of the revaluations that will be taking place. So there's going to be a lot of metrics that we're going to be looking at and a lot of variables that are going to be taking place as we craft the 23 budget, which can get a little more confusing to the public because of the revaluation. And, you know, as the values go up, the rates have to go down because we are limited by state statute to what we can increase the tax rate to. So we'll go all through that through the workshop, and I'll do my best to try to explain it and keep it straightforward for everyone, and we'll keep moving in that direction.
Thanks, Councilwoman Rose.
Thanks, Abel. So I think that Councilwoman Bergner brings up a good point. With the exception of 2020, you know, typically a million or more, with the exception of 2017. So I'm, I think it's something we should definitely keep in mind when we're going through the budget process. You know, are we, are we underspending in places? Or are we overtaxing? What can we do to kind of close that up? If it is consistently around a million dollars, is that something that we can, sort of that we, that will continue that trend, that we can sort of bring down or tighten up a little bit?
So we can, we can get probably a little tighter on budgeting practices on the, you know, on the revenue, and revenues are hard to pinpoint. Sometimes it's hard. On the expenditure side, we can try to narrow that down. Also, the town took a very aggressive approach to get our OPEB plan funded from, from the time it was stood up to where we are today. You should be proud as a council that you're in that unique position because many communities are trying to figure out how to even fund it. And what I'm going to, what I have been working on, and you'll see, you know, later on in the coming months, is, you know, you'll see a plan and some options for you to actually use the OPEB plan to our benefit to help, you know, provide relief on the healthcare and other expenditures related to that, especially in close retirement, in trying to relieve some of that out of the general fund. So you're actually at a point where you can actually use the trust as your benefit as opposed to where everyone else is trying to accelerate it. Again, we're a handful of communities that are in the position we're in, and I'm working with the interlocal trust, our actuaries, and our investment consultants to find the appropriate balance so that we can maintain a healthy status, but actually draw down and use the benefits of the, of all the work that has been put in to get to where we are, and start to give back to the general fund and alleviate some of the pressure that's been placed through taxes to get there. So that would be a pressure point, and that is why I kind of broke out on the chart, what you saw for transfers for operating in OPEB, so that you could understand the difference between the two, not just see, you know, this large number and not, you know, what's 100% behind it.
Thanks, Zach. I appreciate the way that you presented that. It was made it easy to understand. So thank you for taking the time to do that, to do it that way.
No problem.
And yeah, so part of a larger conversation that we can get into as we get into next year's budget, maybe is, you know, how conservative we are in our presumptions as we, as we make the budget. You know, every year, obviously, we're passing a balanced budget. I think staff is, you know, wants to be conservative. You never want to be in a spot where you've ended up spending more than what's in your budget, and you have to come back for a supplemental. So I think all towns generally try to be very conservative in budgeting and end up habitually with surpluses. You know, that's sort of the way it works in municipal financing. So, but are we being too conservative discussion for, you know? Come. All right. Any other comments on this? We do have a motion and a second. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. That brings us to T, a resolution supporting the town of South Kingstown submission of an application to the Southeast New England Program Network for in-kind professional services related to the Sagatucket Park Improvement Project, further described in a memo from the interim town manager to the town council dated June 23rd.
Rory McIntyre, make a motion to approve 11T.
Deb Burgner, I'll second.
Motion from Councilman McIntyre, second from Councilwoman Bergner. Discussion? Councilwoman Bergner?
So in reading the memo from the Parks and Rec and from the EDC, it talks about the east and west banks of the Sagatucket. Is that the side where the parking lot is and the side where the actual park is? So is the, so that was my question when I read the proposals from the outside agencies and read the proposals from this memo, that are they, is, is one project overlapping with this, with item T? Yeah.
Yeah, so that you, that's correct. So there are pieces of this that fall, maybe fall outside of the park purview, but address the Sagatucket watershed. And so it does refer to both the Main Street side of the Sagatucket and the High Street side.
Okay.
That's correct.
So tomorrow night, we could, we can, when we meet with the outside agency, we can talk about that project in the context of this project.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. And item U, a resolution extending the town's declaration of emergency adopted an emergency session on March 15th, 2020, subsequently renewed April 13th, May 11th, June 8th, July 13th, August 11th, September 14th, October 13th, November 9th, December 14th, 2020, January 11th, 2021, January 25th, February 22nd, March 22nd, April 26th, May 23rd, as shown on exhibit three.
Jess Rose, I'd like to make a motion to discuss.
I'm sure. Discussion is open. Councilwoman Bergner?
Uh, I don't want to step on your toes, Jess. You can go first. I was gonna, go ahead.
Yes.
So can we just, it's been a very long time since this has gone into effect. So I think I would like a little bit of clarification from where we were to where we are. I think that, that the community might need a refresher on what exactly this means, and what, what happens if we continue to implement this, or what happens if we decide not to.
Sure. So essentially, with the state still having an executive order in place and a declaration of emergency, where the town is essentially following suit with what the state is also doing. One, because it has to do with, one of the items is the Open Meetings Act, and, and the declaration of emergency, a component of that is ensuring that there can be remote access for the public. When, whenever the state declaration of emergency, and I can have Mike chime in on this, sunsets is when the town declaration would, would also sunset, whether or not we push it out to a different date, that it would sunset at the same time, if I'm not mistaken. Mike, am I correct in that?
Yeah, so each individual municipality's declarations are contingent upon the state declaration being in place. And, and yes, this has gone on for a long time, and there's lots on in the newspapers and social media about why this is continuing, we're done, it's over, et cetera. I can tell you the reason it's still in place into July is because there are several bills before the general assembly, one of them sponsored by Carol McIntyre, actually, with regard to allowing restaurants to continue to do business outside in public through the end of this year, or maybe even through October, November, whenever. And as long as that state of emergency is in place, they can do that. If the legislation is adopted, then that's one item that no longer needs to be covered by an ex- If the legislation is adopted, then that's one item that no longer needs to be covered by an executive order. Terry referenced the OMA. Without the declaration in place, we would have to go back to in-person meetings. With no participation by Zoom or, or any other means except for members of the military who are overseas. We'd have to go back to pre-COVID conditions. Once again, there is a bill pending in the legislature. Which will theoretically address the OMA issue. So that's another reason to keep it in place. A third reason is that any and all costs that continue to accrue. I'm not sure what those might be in South Kingstown, but I'm sure there are costs accruing. In connection with the COVID emergency, will be covered by federal reimbursements. So long as that declaration's in place. So yes, it's been a long time. Yes, it seems like now we're in a good place. Why do we still need it? Those are some of the reasons. And if it happens to go away prior to your next meeting. I doubt that, but if it does, there, there will no longer be a need for the emergency declaration to stay in effect. And in fact, the legal authority for it will go away.
Thanks so much for that explanation. I think it, you know, a lot of people are asking.
Sure.
Because they don't know. So I think it's important to, to have that out there.
If I remember correctly, there was a fourth reason, which is. In the past, this item V that's right next on our agenda, like without item U passing, item V. Is not applicable to, you know, the administrative leave for COVID.
Yeah, good point, Abel. That is also correct, yes.
So those, those are the basically, Councilwoman Bergner, you.
Yeah, so my only reservation has always been notification about actions. So I think that the community maybe misunderstands that the town manager may be acting in like. Without the knowledge of the council and, or like unilaterally. So I think that, that myth exists. So I'm just, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, Terry, that you could, if you were going to take action, that you would be able to maybe. Like in an emergency, update the council before you took action or we could have a meeting and we wouldn't preclude like you doing certain things. But I think it's more about improving the communication loop that you're, I think that's the myth is that they think that.
Right.
The power is invested in one instead of in the council. So if, if, if that were the case, if, if you were able to, to sort of assure. I think it makes more sense. I just think that's what people think it is. And maybe that's what I thought it was. So. So maybe that's a question.
I can't imagine a scenario where a, a decision that needed to be made wouldn't be vetted. Communicated via the council in a, in a, in an immediate fashion. At this point, related to COVID. Can't see it.
If I may, the second to the last paragraph of this declaration specifies. That the interim town manager shall report actions taken pursuant to this emergency declaration to the council. And to the public as soon as practicable, including ongoing updates on the town's website. So that's already in the language of the declaration.
All right, then. Councilwoman Kelso, you had your hand up earlier.
I did, but the town clerk just made my point. We had passed that caveat. Some eight, 10 months ago to make sure that the town manager would report to the council any actions taken. And they'd have to be sanctioned by the council.
All right, that's a good reminder. So at this point, do we have a motion, item U?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Rose, second by Councilman McEntee. Any further discussion? Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Item V is a resolution adopting Executive Order 2020-14. Fourth Amendment extending COVID-19-related administrative leave to employees as shown on exhibit four.
Jess Rose, make a motion to approve 11V.
Rory McEntee, second.
Motion by Councilwoman Rose, second by Councilman McEntee. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimously. Item W, a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for order of notice of public hearing relative. To consider proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance, Article 5 supplementary regulations. That would add a new section 502.7 cottage community as shown on exhibit five.
Rory McEntee, I'll make a motion to approve 11W.
Jess Rose, second.
Motion by Councilman McEntee, second by Councilwoman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? Right, that motion carries unanimously. It's pretty exciting to be considering some more favorable housing policy updates. But that does bring us to the end of tonight's public agenda. Item 12 is in closed executive session. We'll need a motion to move into that.
Jess Rose, make a motion to move to closed executive session. Pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A4 to discuss matters pertaining to investigative proceedings regarding allegations of misconduct. Either civil or criminal regarding AFL-CIO mailer and pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A1. To discuss matters pertaining to personnel.
Here's a second. Motion by Councilwoman Rose, second by Councilman McEntee. Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously. I want to thank everybody for sticking with us to the end of this public agenda who's still here. We will come back when we're done with closed executive session. And you can stick around for that if you'd like. If not, have a good night.
Okay, I believe that's all of us. All right. Mike, you want to? But you're muted.
Sorry about that. The motion would be to close the executive session, seal the minutes, and reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Bergner, second by Councilman Mcatee. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously.
And the minutes will reflect that no motions were made or votes taken during executive session.
Thank you, Mike. And just to let the community know, we are still looking for some more information in this investigation. Mike is dutifully pursuing that. So the whole council is determined to answer every question before we are ready to give a final report to the community detailing what has happened with this mailer, how we got to this point. I want to thank everybody for their patience and bearing with us. We should have something for you in the next coming weeks. Have a good night, everyone. We will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Councilman Bergner, second by Councilman Rose. Any discussion? Anyone opposed? That motion carries unanimously, and it is 9:58. So getting to bed early tonight. Have a good night, folks.